Sorry, did some outreach to just to see what the level of traffic stress was. And I know that they are going to use that information to go to DOT with and work with DOT on future projects. So I would encourage you to get in touch with Colin over at SRPC if that's something that you're interested in and just work with him.
Okay. Thanks. Anything else on the Transportation Subcommittee? Yeah, and the Transportation Subcommittee was myself, Sue Mooney. And since it's almost two years ago, I don't remember. That was about it.
Me as well.
Joe? Joe? Oh, sorry. How could I forget you?
I'm pretty forgettable. No worries.
I don't see your face. All I see is your name.
If I did that, you wouldn't hear me. So I'm gonna just stick with no video.
That's fine. That's fine. I understand.
Mr. Chairman, I did sit on, sit in on that a couple of times as well.
All right. See, now they're coming out of the woodworks. So that means that you, that both Gary and Joe are currently still on the Transportation Subcommittee.
Correct.
Right.
Excellent. All right, so we'll have some next steps, but let me, the first next step is really just sending that letter out. And then the second step will be requesting to have a meeting, or at least attend one of the Select Board meetings to discuss these items. So if we don't hear a response, then we'll just request to meet with them.
Sounds like a good plan.
Yep. And then, so the third thing that I had was potential 2021 zoning changes. And I'll jump into that with, maybe Steph could summarize those.
Yeah, so I guess I just wanted to know, you know, of the proposed zoning changes, the big list that we did up last year, what are still, for this round are gonna be high priorities? What, you know, new things have popped up that we should add to the list? Do we want to have another collaborative meeting with the zoning board and the conservation enforcement as well? So I just wanted to get an idea of, you know, things that have changed and how collaboratively we'd like to go forward.
So Steph, was that on the, the list? Was that included on the list here that you circulated? Let me just share what I have. Can you, there we go, share it. Let me go to the top. So this is the list that was circulated before. So a number of these things were passed in 2020. So these have all sort of been, yeah, all those are...
Yep, 1 through 3 have been passed. So that's all taken care of.
So let's just tick through a couple of these and see if there's any interest in some of these discussions. So building height, there is a term that's used grade instead of grade plane or use grade plane. So there's potentially a little loophole between what grade means. Better clarification of that, you know, I think that's good.
Yeah, I think it's necessary to clear that one up.
Yep.
Well, on that one, Mr. Beal, I don't know, I can't remember if this one came from the Building Inspector or not. I think, and maybe Steph can correct me or not, but if we don't have a specific definition, does it just go to code?
Um, yeah, so Dale is the zoning ordinance administrator. So anything that's kind of up in the air, he gets final say on.
Okay.
But I think some of these terms were ones that he wanted to get to strengthen his positions.
Okay. Yeah, I definitely agree that we should, it's nice to define things, having it clear for everybody.
Yeah, and when we get into the details of what these wordings are gonna be, you know, we'll, we'll go check, make sure it's not conflicting with anything or state, you know, building code or anything.
It's okay to back up for items 1 through 3?
No.
But there's some that we didn't do that we decided to push off?
Okay. No, I didn't realize that.
Well, I think item 1 is pretty much 1A, B are done. C, I don't think we added the, that language at the beginning of any of these sections where, you know, to really, really hammer out, like site plan required or whatnot. It's somewhere in the body usually, but it's not at the beginning.
So the multifamily development?
Well, that was an example, but, and then for, you know, I'm kind of fine with where we're at with it unless we really want to retweak it. Article, and number 2, we, 2A, I think we left alone based on, I think there was legal review and zoning board input on that one to kind of leave it at where it was.
Yep.
We're good there. Good there. And then 3, 3, we, I think we accomplished under the definition of some of the items. And I think the permit process was left up to the Building Inspector and the Board of Selectmen to create. Because it's out of our purview.
Yep.
Okay. All right, now we move on.
Just a question on the temporary housing that I remember the Building Inspector bringing up. And so it's, I don't know, I don't know that it's been addressed, but he did talk about the tiny house aspect.
That's right.
Just, just something that I had been thinking about, seeing them around lately.
And I think we had left, I think last year we kicked it down the road on that one because there was a couple of committees at the state level. So we were kind of waiting to see what they were gonna do with RSAs before we, before we did anything. I see Steph shaking her head. Is maybe, yeah. So Steph, has anything come out of those committees?
I haven't seen anything. I haven't checked up specifically on that, but nothing's come across my desk. I'm gonna make a note though to...
Okay, so we'll add tiny houses. You know, keep that on our radar here and...
May I comment?
Yeah.
I can tell you right now that that's one of the things that is kind of frustrated right now in this office because there is still no policy in place. And it's a big, it's getting to be a bigger issue in town.
Okay, well, maybe that's something we can up the priority on and have a session on that. Okay, uh, let's go with the building height. We talked about that. So ADU amendments. And I believe some of these were going along with the state's update. Is that correct? Or we were, there was a... The state, I don't remember. If the state has a maximum bedroom or does not state that there's a maximum bedroom, we may want to just cap it at a 2-bedroom.
I think the state has a minimum.
I thought it was square footage.
Yeah.
Right, right, right. Yeah, I think you're right, Gary. There was square footage, but it didn't say how many bedrooms.
Yeah.
So we were maybe gonna, you know, cap it at 2-bedrooms.
I think that, from what I remember though, the discussion with the Building Inspector on that was, and I kind of agreed with him that because the square footage was as small as it is, it would be almost impossible to go over that amount of bedroom space anyway. But I, you know, that's kind of what I remember discussion-wise.
Right, right. Okay, well, we'll, again, this is something we're gonna just try and pare down the list of things that we feel are kind of critical here, or at least prioritize some of these that we can dig into over the course of, you know, the next few months.
Sure.
So that will stay on that. Number 7 was the requirements for the maximum lot coverage. Maybe consider revising it. Most towns have 30%, and we have 40%. Any comments on that, whether we should continue looking at that or...
Just again, from Dale's point of view, I think he felt that we were extreme. That's just what I'm recalling from his input.
Seems like that one's straightforward.
Yep. Okay, Article 7, or 7, Article 3, the flood zone hazard. Updates of the map. The final maps are still pending and can be adopted by the Select Board once released. Does anybody know what the status of those maps are?
I believe they have not been released yet.
Well, we'll keep looking for that. Junkyards. So currently, no more than 2 unregistered, uninspected vehicles. So that's a, maybe a request from zoning or code enforcement.
What's the request? They're not enforcing the ordinance right now.
Well, that is something that we do need to consider is really the enforcement part of it as well. I mean, how realistic is it? That this, this will be enforced?
And I think, I think this definition, or the request to add the definition might have come from, from the Building Inspector to try to give them some enforcement capability.
Yeah, doesn't it, what I see here is consider adding, is AA, no more than 2 unregistered vehicles. So I'm not sure what it is now.
Right, right now, we just have, you know, junkyards, and just consistent with the RSA, no outdoor storage of junk shall be permitted.
Yeah, I can see the problem there. Someone might say that those are parts that they could sell, and it's not junk.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I know that there was a, a concern last year, the year before, of a property. Specifically, it was for the wireless tower, cellular tower, the parcel land there that had multiple vehicles, unregistered vehicles all over the place. And really, there was no, there was no language in our zoning that gives Dale any, like teeth to say you can't have that many unregistered vehicles. But on the other hand, I mean, what, why is it 2? You know, there's probably a number of people that have cars in their lot that they're planning on fixing up or in the middle of fixing up, and maybe there's 3. I don't know. Anyway, that's something we can keep talking about. We'll leave that on. Number 9, clarify major versus minor home occupation. So that just sounds like we need to get into a little bit better definition.
And for me, this is something I would recommend that we push as like a low priority. Just, we've had it come up once in the, I think, 10 years that I've been on, or 8 years that I've been on.
Yep.
And it was a very niche item that I don't know that we would ever capture.
Okay. Impact fees. Clarification to how they're applied. Guess I'm not 100% sure that we don't have those clarified because...
Yeah, I thought that was pretty much to where we needed to be.
Yeah, I think our impact fee requirements are pretty detailed. Okay, well... I think, sorry. I think so.
Did that one have something to do with, wasn't there an issue with, people thinking they were grandfathered in because they divided up the land way back when, but now they're just now starting to develop it? Then we have a case like that?
Yes, we did. And I think we took, and I think during the zoning update from last year, this year, I think we took, I think we took that out, that language out because it was so old that it was no longer, it would no longer be applicable to anything.
Maybe that's just...
We got rid of grandfather. Well, yeah, but there was a specific phrase about, because it talks back to the original adoption of the impact fee ordinance. And then, you know, a 5-year, like a 5-year grace period kind of. But these were adopted so long ago that those 2 times added together were beyond. So I think we took, we just took that language out last year.
Okay, we can, we can strike this one out. If it needs to come back, we can always revisit it.
Let's make sure that we actually took care of the 5-year window.
Okay.
I'm looking at it right now. I'm just making sure. Yeah, it looks to me like it's gone, so, but we definitely, we'll just confirm 100% before we take that one off the list.
Okay. Separate conforming and non-conforming lot regulations set up as charts or paragraphs. Steph, was some of this done, I thought, in the cleanup for the housekeeping items? As far as charts? And setbacks and all of that? You're on mute.
The only table I can remember putting in was for the setbacks. I don't believe I did anything else. So I mean, unless there's anything else that you want to put in for conforming versus non-conforming other than setbacks, we would need to add that.
Okay, let's leave this on the list and we can kind of dive into it later on and just put it on the, maybe not the low priority, but one of the medium priority. So then, 12 is additions and new provisions. So there's one here to restrict adult entertainment, bookstores. Do those even exist anymore now that there's internet? I don't...
Route 1 in Kittery, I think, if you go over the border.
Marijuana grow facilities, dispensaries. This is from school or daycare. Well, I, so those are all commercial uses? And, you know, no, there isn't any commercial zone near a school. I'm not sure about daycare. I don't, I don't see this as a real high priority, but...
Would it be possible for any of those to be like an at-home business, something along those lines, where they would come in for a minor home occupation or something like that?
They could, but there's only a certain amount of, you know, approved uses for home occupation.
That's true.
Probably not those 2.
Yeah, and one of those might, you know, probably have regulation from the state that is probably gonna be beyond anything we come up with at this time. Could be considered agriculture, which is, we're an agricultural town. But I think, I think the hindrance on this, not the hindrance, but the thought on it in the past with a lot of putting in specific restrictions, is once you start listing things out, it was, this was the argument, was once you start listing things out, then it, it basically can be, variance can be applied for, or it changes the process a bit. As opposed to just leaving it out and it's not, it's not stated that it's not acceptable as is. I could be wrong.
No, that is right. The ordinance as it's written is what's called a permissible ordinance. So anything that's listed is permitted. Ergo, anything that is not listed is not permitted.
Okay, well, I think that covers it. We just don't identify those uses and they're not permitted unless they get a variance. Fence setback, 1 foot on the property line with butter's permission, allow up to 6-foot fence. Standard heights are 4 and 6. I don't recall what our fence ordinance is, but there probably is, we don't have one. So there might be some language you want to add. As we become more populated and houses get closer to each other, you know, might be good to have some guidance.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Currently, the fences are allowed to go right on the boundary line. So that is how, that's how it is being told to everybody who calls about fencing in the office.
Okay.
So Joanna, is Dale running into concerns with that? I'm thinking that this came from him?
Yes. So one of the other concerns on that is you couldn't, because there's no regulation on it at all, you can't actually put it too close to the road, therefore causing visibility issues and such like that. But the biggest thing is, is people are calling and asking, what's the rules? And the only rule is, is it can't be a spike fence, so nothing greater than 6 feet. And you can put it on your boundary line, and the nice side, whatever that side is, has to be facing your neighbor. Those are the only rules he's going on right now.
That seems like an easy one. I just don't know where we would add it. It seems like a preemptive item too. You know, we're seeing requests, but, you know, the 1-foot setback is so that they can maintain the fence without trespassing, basically.
Yeah.
I just don't, we only have 1 fence currently, and it's in the definition of structure, which just states that a fence is not included. Is not included in the definition of structure. Well, we don't really have to review that tonight, but it definitely is something that ought to be put on the agenda.
Are we calling that medium priority? You're on mute, Dirk. Sounds good.
Well, if it's bothering the code enforcement, then I think it ought to be a high priority. We ought to get it straightened out so that he can deal with it properly.
All right, I'll, I'll take Buzz's word that that should go to a high. That's...
All right, sounds good.
I categorize it as hopefully high, easy, so... Exactly. Should be pretty easy.
That makes it a number 1 priority then. Just get it done.
Just get it done. Yeah, sorry, I was on mute. My dogs were barking. So the steep slope ordinance, you know, we had the ordinance written up. And we were gonna put it forth into town meeting, but we decided to hold back on that because there was a lot of other things that we wanted to get done first. So depending on some of these other items, I mean, do we want to keep that as a high priority? And maybe look at getting that into the 2021?
Mr. Beal, I would like to see it on there. We had it kind of drawn up, and I think we're starting to see this, as we're starting to see some of the marginal land come up for development more frequently. I think this is kind of becoming more of a thing for the town that we should be kind of looking at a little bit more thoroughly. And our neighboring towns, I think the majority of them have ordinances like this. And we're kind of, I feel like we're kind of on the outside of that.
Yep.
We did incorporate a little bit of it when we did the subdivision reg rewrite with, when Mr. Colby, the prior Building Inspector, was here. I know he incorporated a little bit of the language from the ordinance into the subregs that, when we adopted them.
Yep. Okay, we'll keep that one on the priority. Additional, addition of a stream buffer ordinance. Conservation Commission already has drafted the language for that. So I guess that's just maybe something we take up and...
Now, if I remember correctly on this one, they drafted it, that we kind of tasked it to them, or reassigned it in a way to them and to the CONCOM, and they drafted it. And I think the timing of it, when it fell to us, wasn't good for, for having public hearings, as well as we were trying to get the, just kind of more of the overhaul done on the zoning ordinance. So we kind of pushed that to this year.
Okay. The addition of a minimum disturbance amendment. I'm not, I don't remember what this one is.
I always feel like this is written backwards. I feel like it should be a maximum disturbance.
Yeah.
It, it kind of, it goes back to the lot disturbance and landscaping. And gives a little more, more detail as to, you know, what that is and what should occur and and everything. And again, I think we incorporated a little bit of it in the subregs. So if it's okay with the chair, you know, I'd like to reread that and then refer to our subdivision regs that we adopted to see how much of the language we've already pulled in.
Sure. Okay, yeah, that sounds good.
And I can report that back at the next meeting.
All right, thanks, Ed. Uh, then we've got addition of an Airbnb regulation. I think this is another one that just, I, I don't know that we're having a lot of issues with Airbnbs. Uh, I think the last time I looked at Airbnb and listed Nottingham and it had maybe two listings on the lake. And then I, I guess what's the difference of advertising on Craigslist versus Airbnb? You know, it's.
I, I think they just use Airbnb as the, the thing that we all know, but I think it's, it's basically talking about short term rentals. Um, so to create some like language about that. Because when you, when does a rental become, um, you know, more of a business that, like especially a short term rental that can become more of a business and gets outside of like a residential use.
Well, aren't there some new regulations from the state now on those short term rentals with the coronavirus?
I think there's.
Temporary or more of just uh, under the Corona headline though.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that motels, hotels and, uh, short term rentals are all, uh, controlled by the state now.
Yeah, yeah, you're right. But it's like, came up because of the, you know, COVID and so I don't know how, if, if that's long term or not, we none of us know.
Well, I, I think it ought to be put on the back burner until we find out whether it's going to be long term or not. We got enough on our plate with what we already been talking about today.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and I was gonna add to the, you know, do we regulate, you know, the summer rentals on the lake, which we know there's a number of? You know, and do we want to?
Yeah, I mean, some, some of them aren't even advertised. I mean, some of them are just word of mouth or friends and family, you know, taking weeks, you know, I get it this week, you get it next week and it operates very similar to one of these, but uh, you know, how, how do we track whether it's commercial or whether there's money exchanged or, you know, for that point? You know, why are we doing that? I, I understand maybe there's some impacts to the people next door to them. But I, I'm not sure that we've had a lot of requests or problems with it. Well, let's put, we'll, we'll put it on the lowest priority.
Do you have access Dirk to the, the letter that, um, the code enforcement that Dale wrote to us, putting his priorities in a list? He has like 10 things.
I think, I don't have it at my fingertips, but I think it's synthesized into this letter here, but I might be wrong. And Steph, I don't know if you have that letter or Joanna.
Number, number five was clarify minor versus major, which we just took out.
I think most of. Sorry, go ahead, Leanne.
I was just gonna say it's dated October 23rd. I didn't know if that helped.
Yeah.
Do you have it?
I don't have the, I don't have the letter right in front of me. I think it may have been a email that I can search back for, but, um, I think his major things got, got taken care of last year. Um, and then I, after this question, I was going to send it to him and have him highlight, you know, which ones are big ones again for him this year.
I, yeah, I took a bunch of notes on it when he talked to us and his, well, his first thing was to reduce the septic setbacks to 20 feet all around. Yeah, I'll see if I can find it on my computer too and can share it. Cause it's, there's 10 of them all together.
I have one, but it's not dated October 23rd. Do you, do you want me to share it or are we going to put this on the back burner now?
Well, let's just, let, let's see if he has an updated list or maybe we just take a look at his list and compare it to what we just got through in 2020.
So would you like me to email this?
Yeah, yeah. And, and, you know, we can prioritize those. Doesn't mean that we have to do all or any of them, but, uh, you know, we value their, his opinion and want to make, um, it clearer for the citizens and what they can and can't do. Okay, uh, so then let me just, we'll get to here, to left here is, uh, the addition of a driveway setback. Not sure how critical that is.
That's one I kind of had talked about a few times when it's come up during some of the subdivisions. It kind of, I feel like it kind of rears its head during more of the major subdivisions. Where, uh, you know, driveways in access, access points can be put right on the property line currently. There's no, there's zero setback.
Okay. So not setback from the road, but setback from the lot line.
From a budding properties.
Right, right. So we, we do have one in major subdivisions. No, we, we just have it on scenic roads, right? 300 feet. But we don't say where it's located relative to the, you know, side lot line.
I think sometimes that those end up pushed toward the lot line for whatever reason, whether it's for, um, safety, clearance or for wetlands or, you know, sometimes we see that.
But I don't want to contradict. Yeah, I, I don't want to contradict our, we, we also would have to look at, you know, how we have, um, shared driveways. You know, those almost always are on the lot line.
The, the shared driveway is different because it is a shared driveway. So the language of that specifically states that the driveway shall be on the common lot, uh, boundary. And that makes sense. Um, you're trying to keep it instead of having meander across one property onto another in the back or whatever.
Yeah.
But, uh, and, and those properties could, you know, that, that, that's a new subdivision or whatever, where it's going to be, it's planned for, but and agreed to, but the other side of it is, you know, if you're property owner A and the property parcel next to you goes up for development and the new road goes in, it can go right on your property line. With a in that, in your only recourse is to, you know, move your house.
Okay. Well, we, we can address that one. It might be an easy one that we just add some language and have the exempt exemption of shared driveways in there.
As I say, cause with that too, when you put in the drive, if, if you do put a driveway in on a, on a lot line, you know, any kind of buffer is also gone, visual buffer. So trees, those kinds of things are going to be removed.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, and then as we jump down to the last one here, accessory structure allowed on lots without a primary structure. Define primary and accessory structure.
So this was one that we had an issue with in the planning office. I don't know if we ever met, made, sorry, if it ever made its way to a planning board discussion. Um, but this was basically, you know, at what point you allow accessory structures on, as defined in accessory structure on a vacant lot? And then does it become a primary structure and what is the issue there? And um, it's something that Farmington was having a big issue with at the time that we were looking at it. So we, we kind of followed that pretty closely and their issue was, if you have an accessory structure on a vacant lot, you don't have a house, you don't have an owner there and it has the tendency to become a junkyard lot and just a storage lot. Um, and is that something that we want to allow? In and of itself. So I wanted to put it on here because we had a really hard time with it, um, amongst the staff. Might not be a high priority issue. Um, we've only had, encountered it that once. But just thought I'd bring it up.
Okay.
Well, hypothetically, if, if someone proposed a structure such as this on a lot, the, the law would first have to be deemed buildable or not. I imagine. And then, and then it would have to abide by the, the setbacks, uh, that set forth and, and on a regular parcel.
But I guess the, the issue here is that if there's a garage, you know, somebody just puts a garage there and they just want to store some vehicles in the garage and then that spills outside and then it, you know, accumulates stuff and it's not occupied. So that owner's not there. They just show up to fix their cars or tractors or whatever they're doing.
So a simple solution to that would be, uh, consider it a commercial lot, not a, uh, residential lot.
Yeah, I, I think we could think about that. I did, I'd have to think about that because if it's just one person or if it's just a, they're not actually doing business, but it's their hobby. They're not selling.
Still not residential.
Yeah, I, I, I agree. I think that the use.
So you could even put a, like, you could put a time limit on it. You could say, okay, you can put up the garage first, but within a year, you've got to turn it into a residential lot. Or it becomes commercial.
Well, like Dirk was starting to say, I think about the use of it too. I don't know what, what is the use in that? Cause that can make a big difference.
Yep. Okay. Well, I think we've got some priorities and as Buzz stated, you know, we've got a lot of things here still that we may want to whittle down even further, but this at least starts us thinking about these things again. And, and we'll just come up with kind of a reprioritized list and try and, uh, tick away at these and have them as discussion items and meetings that we have a little bit extra time in.
Is there any change to our timeline with, uh, since, since the town is now an SB two town because of, uh, for things or is our, are we still kind of on the same trajectory for when public hearings have to be noticed and heard for these?
I believe it's generally the same. Um, I will check on it though. I don't think it differs too much.
Okay. And then the last thing that I had, I would just had, uh, key areas of emphasis. I, I was just gonna, this is kind of the catchall. Ed's usually good at, um, coming up with a couple of extra items. So I assigned him. Is there anything we missed through this that you remember, Ed?
No, I mean, I think our big priority for the last couple of years has been, so we, we, we really tackled the subdivision regs a few years ago and completely overhauled that. And the site plan, the site plan regs I think are probably next on our, our list after we get through some of the zoning. And then other than that, it's probably kind of low hanging items for things that we still, I don't think we've accepted our bylaws yet this year. Uh, which certainly I think we just means we're operating under last year's bylaws. So we, there was a couple of comments on those as to changes. So we should probably just put those on the list for one of the, the meetings to, to, uh, see if anybody has wants to change them or not.
Yeah, I know Sue had a couple of comments in the, when we did look at those. So I want to make sure she's involved.
And, and for our bylaws and like point about, you know, rules of procedure, um, do we want to post those online with our other documents so that we have, you know, kind of easy access to them and I, I don't know, see a reason why we couldn't have them on there. So Joanna, is that something you would mind posting once we, uh, re-adopt them?
I don't mind at all. I thought they were. Um, I guess it was just the zoning board that I posted them.
No, that's okay. Uh, and then couple of other items I had. Sorry, buddy. And I think we have this document already, but just making sure that we maybe conform to it is, is, is having like kind of a checklist of when we make our uh, motions for, for approvals to, to really outline the, uh, conditions that are, are necessary. I think Steph gave us a document for that or Joanna did. And I think we should always be kind of including a sunset clause on there. That for things, we have it in our sub regs and I think there's some state, some areas where our hands are tied by the state, but, um, I think it's just good practice to to specifically make in the motion a, a date. So it's clear. And then we also, that also can become our checklist for, uh, when we have plans to come back in, to make sure everything is, uh, has been met and we check that off it before we sign the milars.
Yeah, I think that's a, you know, important part is that we do have a check there before we release the sign, sign milars that all those conditions are met. Okay. Thanks, Ed. Uh, anybody else have topics of interest to kind of tackle over this next year?
Do you mind if I add one?
Sure, go ahead.
Um, so Justin, going through the site plan and subdivision checklist, I've noticed and it's probably just a result of changes over the years that there are some things that could be cleaned up. Um, duplicate questions, some formatting stuff, um, clarifying language. Um, wondering if I can do up a draft for you guys, track some changes and see what you think.
Sure.
Good idea.
All right.
Anybody else? Okay. Well, good. We got, uh, some work ahead of us. That's really all we had for specific meeting discussion today. I think we do need to get, get that master plan. Uh, the, the last uh, adopted copy was 2011. So it's almost 10 years. We just want to make sure we're keeping up with that. I think we are, but we just need to have the document.
It was adopted October 12, uh, 2012. So look at that. It's even newer.
Wow, we got one more year before it's 10 years. Anyway. Uh, all right. So any other, I guess I'll just go around. Does anybody have any updates? Um, I'll start with Tyler. Any select board updates? Sorry, I put you on the spot quick.
Oh, it's okay. I'm just printing off. I, I, I need more ink again. Select board, uh, on, uh, Monday, seven 13. Chris had, uh, was talking to us, uh, about, we have the, the camera is up and working again, but they're also looking at the, uh, possibility of having the camera and where people don't have to come into the building and can still do Zoom, but every, it all jives, you know, you can hear them, they can hear us or whatever. So they are looking into that. Lauren Bascom or Laura Bascom, Deputy Treasurer. Done that. Uh, road, road paving, um, road paving this year will be done by advanced paving. We discussed, you know, what do we do with all the buildings in town and, you know, how to upkeep them. Checking the grants and, and see what we can do to preserve some of our beautiful buildings. And we approve the inspectors of elections. And also, I don't know if you guys probably heard, there's a event happening in Nottingham, the Northeast Water Cross. Championships will be held in Nottingham on Saturday, the 26th.
What, what is that?
You know, they take the snowmobiles across the open water. It's small. I mean, it's nothing like Fremont. I think there's about 200 people, if that, so.
So snowmobiles can't just, you know, wait for snow, can they?
That is one where my understanding of the, the select board's opinion on it was that this would be a one time permit.
Yeah.
Any future requests would have to go before the planning board's site plan.
I don't know, I mean, I think it's a, it depends on if they try to get bigger or their size or whatever, but.
Yeah.
This was some. Large private property. But we, I don't know, we'll see if they come back again. We told them, you know, Chris gave them instructions. And some of the selectmen that go in, I don't know if anybody from planning board wants to go as well. We can go and actually, you know, see it ourselves, you know, walk around and see what it looks like or. And. Give it a thumbs up or a thumbs down for any future. You know, request to do it again.
Can you restate the date?
It is July 26th. And it will be from, I want to be 10 to 2.
Okay.
It's on, I don't know if it's all Nottingham, they're on our Nottingham Facebook page. Steve Reynolds is the president of Northeast Water Cross.
I just don't want to give out the, the planning boards, you know, authority on this, which is also a time for, for if there was a. Site plan or an application for this that came before us, it would also be. It would notify the abutters, which we don't know if that occurred in this case. It would allow us to notify town departments like fire, emergency services. Which we don't know if happened.
They're gonna have, they're gonna have police detail. On the road.
A hundred people possibly. And as it's marketed right now, it's, you know. Bonfire, three day event. You know. Limitations have been placed on number of people that can attend. And, and I don't know if the neighbors, any neighbors have been notified of this kind of use. You're basically turning a. Property into a racetrack for three days. Whether it's water or not. So I, I think we have to tread carefully. As a town. With permitting these without potentially giving abutters and others. The potential to voice a concern.
Is this at Potackaway?
No, it's, I don't know what the exact address is. Is it from 156, is it?
114 Raymond Road.
Yeah, yeah.
And it, it has gone through all of the departments in the town. We had a technical review committee on it. So all fire, ambulance, PD. Public works, everybody's been involved and abutters were notified.
That's why we, that's why we wanted to go as, you know, board members and maybe not everybody from planning wants to go just to see ourselves. I mean. Like, you know, most of us can hear Lee raceway from our homes, but I mean. You know, some, some people it may bother, some it doesn't mean. I mean, I can't hear it as much as somebody may be over on Casey's road or something, but. That's what we figured if we went and actually heard this ourselves, we could, you know, then if anybody came, we'd be able to answer their questions and say. Put a stop to this or we'll. I do like to tend to two on, that's when the, the event happens.
I'm confused though, they're crossing water? What water are they crossing?
There's a little pond there.
It's a sand pit. So I think, you know, most sand pits after they get dug down, so they become a body of water.
Yeah, that was my question is I saw some photos of it, I think on Facebook at one point. And I know, I think there were some existing ponding and then it looks like they basically. Created a bigger pond, essentially a manmade water structure. Not as big as some of the water cross ponds you see out there, but I didn't know if, kind of go along Ed's comments. If something like this did grow, they might want to increase the size of that. In theory, they're getting into the point of. Possible larger land disturbance as well.
Yeah, we, we, we made it pretty clear as the select board that we're not looking to make this a, you know, the thing that happens in Fremont every year. Very clear that, that, that we can't let that happen in Nottingham. And they also do, they, I guess they do this as well in Northwood at a much.
Yeah, the crank holders do it there.
Yeah, so. Well, yeah, like I said, we're, I guess. Just putting our feet in the water and if it doesn't work out, I mean. It's over, so. And that's all I got.
Okay, thanks Tyler. Ian, got anything? Updates, news?
Nothing from me. Definitely willing to lend a hand on master plan subcommittee. Or transportation, really anybody that needs bodies, I'm willing to help with both too, so.
Okay, great.
You can join, you can add me. If there's any email lists or anything like that, feel free to add me to those.
Excellent. Thank you. Ed?
Nope, we're good.
Leanne?
Well, for the historical society, we had to cancel the annual blueberry pancake breakfast that we usually have up at the square. So that was kind of sad.
Yeah.
But we felt like that was in the best interest. And for the trails committee, we're still working on leaving a trail on Marshwood.
Okay.
Hey Leanne, for the historical, for the blueberry thing, and sorry, it's probably offline, but. Maybe an alternative this year could be small, like little kits for blueberry pancakes with like little things of maple syrup from some of the local producers.
Yeah, that's a possibility. We'll have to look into that.
Gary, do you have any updates?
I just pulled something off of Stafford's. Website, which is just talking about how they've. Launched a variety of new improved geographic information systems for mapping platforms. So. It's called. Arc, Arc Online with new tools. So. In addition to new maps for all 18 municipalities in the Stafford region. So. Just bring that one up.
Thank you. Joe?
Nope, no updates.
Buzz?
No updates.
Steph?
Nothing from me.
Joanna?
We have a new case coming up, so be on the lookout for the material coming. And I think that's all for now.
Okay. So we do have some minutes to approve and those were June 24th. No? Shaking your head? Okay, it's on the agenda, that's all.
I apologize. I think you guys are already approved those.
Last meeting, I think.
Yeah. I apologize for not taking that off the agenda.
Okay, so no minutes.
Yes.
Alright, that's all I had for. This meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adjourn?
Great.
Second.
Motion and a second. Those in favor, sign off. Thanks everyone. Thank you.
Bye.